All right, thank you for coming. Hello and welcome to the May 1st, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I am your Vice Chair, Jeffrey Barton. Our Chair has resigned from the Commission, so I will be serving today as the Acting Chair for this meeting. We will hold officer elections in a future meeting, so we'll begin with roll call. Mr. Palmquist.
Vice Chair Barton.
Present.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Present.
Commissioner Seckel.
Present.
Commissioner Faircloth.
Present.
And Commissioner Bean.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. So the first section of our agenda is the administrative section of the agenda. Under this section, we, the first item is approval of the minutes from March 20th and April 3rd, 2024. Any questions from Commissioners? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Before we move to the next item, which will be the updates from Committee Liaisons, we have a little scheduling discussion. For our June meeting, the regular date would be June 5th, and I'd like to just kind of hold the Commissioners on moving that one day to June 6th, Thursday. Does anybody know offhand if that's...
I have no conflict.
Yeah, it's fine for me.
That's fine for me.
Same time and place?
Let me just pull up my calendar real fast, if that's okay. You said June 6th.
6th.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great, so we will schedule our next meeting for June 6th, 2024, at 5:00 PM here in this room.
And no pre-meeting? Does this sort of like a special meeting? Do you want to do that?
No, I don't.
We can do a pre-meeting.
Okay, sure.
As usual, 4:30.
Okay.
All right. And thank you, Commissioner Wheatley, for reminding me to have a land acknowledgement. We've, for the last several meetings, been putting forth a land acknowledgement, and if you're willing, Commissioner Wheatley, I'll kick it over to you.
Yes, I appreciate you. As we gather here today as the Planning and Zoning Commission, the body tasked with reviewing and advising on appropriate land use in the city of Asheville, it is fitting to acknowledge the storied history of this land. We occupy the land of the Cherokee people, who have stewarded and been in a relationship with these mountains and waterways from time immemorial. This land is occupied through violence, oppression, coercion, broken treaties, and forced relocation. Please join me in expressing respect and gratitude for the present-day Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, the Cherokee Nation, and the United Gidooa Band of Cherokee, and all of the, all of our indigenous neighbors, as well as the past and present marginalized community members, as we seek to join in the healing of the indelible traumas that is embedded in this land.
So next on our agenda is an update from Committee Liaisons and Work Groups.
Couple things first, Vice Chair Barton. Can we talk about the July meeting too while we're talking about scheduling? I think we were talking about maybe moving that back a week and a day because of the July 4th holiday.
That's right. Thank you.
We can talk about that at the June meeting as well, or now.
Thank you.
I think you were considering June, July 11th, Thursday, July 10th is HRC. So we're thinking July 11th, but July 3rd, we have a lot of conflicts with the holiday there.
I can confirm that July 11th is better for me, and it works in my calendar.
That's fine with me.
That works for me.
That works for me.
Okay, so the July meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will take place on Thursday, July 11th, at 5:00 PM in this room, with a pre-meeting at 4:30.
Yep. I've got a couple notes I'll just add. So we are, we are streaming the video of this meeting. We're not able to stream the audio live. No one can hear this to know that, who's trying to watch, but there should be an announcement on that, so folks should know when they tune in that they're not going to hear audio. We'll be adding the audio afterwards, so they'll be able to hear the audio tomorrow. So to those folks who are being inconvenienced by that, I'll just apologize for them after the fact. The second thing I'll note is there is some protests planned for the packed square area. Our city management and security folks did not think it was enough of a security threat to not have any of these meetings, this meeting held tonight. So I'm just going to state that. There's extra police presence to, to help with security for those protests. So once anything changes or notified otherwise, we're going to continue to have a meeting as, as planned.
Thank you, Mr. Palmquist.
Thank you.
So next, we will move into update from Committee Liaisons. Commissioner Wheatley, do you have any update from multimodal?
Unfortunately, I missed the latest multimodal transportation committee meeting, so I don't have an update.
Great, thank you. We'll look forward to an update on our June 6th meeting. So before we move into a presentation that we have planned, we do have several items on the agenda that are slated to be continued, and now that we have our June date, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue. Item four, request for special use permit for a group home located at 130 Rock Hill Road. Item five, a request to rezone property on Long Shoals Road from RS2 to highway business. Item seven, a request to conditionally rezone property located at 172 Moody Avenue. And item eight, a request to amend the conditional zoning for property at 179 and 144 Riverside Drive. So the motion would be to continue each of these four items to date certain June 6th, 2024, and if anybody is here to speak on these items, he may come back and visit us. Then, do I have a motion to continue these four items?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So next up, we have an informal presentation on tree canopy preservation by our staff. Urban Forester, so please come up, introduce yourself at the mic.
All right, I want to advance. How do I advance?
Right here.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Well, thank you Commissioners for having me out today. Keith Akin, we're Forester Planning and Urban Design Department, here to talk to you a little bit today, real briefly, about tree canopy preservation, most commonly known as TCP, what I like to refer to it as, or if you'd like to refer to it as a number, it's 719 in our ordinances. So where does TCP happen? Shortly as to your single-family residential, major, minor subdivisions, multi-family residential, non-residential, major, uh, man, I'm getting it out here. Major, minor subdivision of land, new building construction, new open uses of land, expansions of buildings over 1,500 square feet, expansions of open uses over 3,000 square feet. Only place it really doesn't happen is, is single-family lots, single-family homes, and that sort of thing, so. Requirements, as far as the requirements of the, the ordinance, it shall meet the applicable standards according to State Sites Resource Management Overlay. We have three of those. It's the downtown district, you're probably familiar with them, downtown, urban, and suburban. So when we start figuring out, you know, how much land has to be set aside for tree canopy preservation and that sort of thing, and, and so we, we start with using those three management overlays. Residential commercial developments can group trees into clusters. They don't have to pick a corner of a lot, or a strip of a lot. They can move the trees around based upon whether it's greater than two acres or less than two acres. I'll go over that here in a little bit, but it doesn't have to necessarily be in one spot on the lot or the development. It could be moved around, and it could be individual trees all around the lot. Trees preserved to satisfy the landscape requirement, so if you have like a Phase One development that was done, you know, seven years prior, and those trees can count as your tree canopy preservation, we can count those trees. They still have to meet certain requirements and certain markers, as far as, you know, where they are on the site, or how close they may to be B2 structures and that sort of thing. So you can actually use your, your landscape trees that you used in another phase. The biggest one here, under this requirement, is trees need to be healthy, non-hazardous, and non-invasive. So a lot of big words there. Healthy being the biggest one, you know, when I consider healthy, I look at a tree and I, I determine, you know, does it have a insect? Does it have a disease problem? Is it in decline? And also invasives come into play there. So if the trees are covered in, by invasives, or we have invasive growing up the trees, we also consider that a non-healthy tree. And we don't allow any invasive species or anything like that. And also hazardous trees, you know, obviously if it's going to fall on something, we don't count those. So this is just a really quick map. It's not the biggest one in the world, but essentially this is our resource management districts that I just talked about recently. So the suburban district being pretty much, you know, on the periphery of the, the city limits, urban, a little bit closer to the center, and then that little tiny, I guess, purple dot there in the middle, that would be our downtown districts. Yeah?
I can't see the legend. Would you mind reading out what that, if that legend has any figures, as it relates to like tree canopy?
So, how do I do this? Control plus?
That's right.
I'm sorry, it was, it was a very small... I think it's shift plus, maybe?
It's on the... It's on the... It doesn't have figures.
Okay. All right.
Good work.
So yeah, those are pretty much the ones I just went over a couple slides ago. So once again, suburban, urban, downtown.
Okay, and do you know the offhand, the canopy percentages or anything like that, that you're trying to retain in those areas, or what the target goals are?
I do not have those numbers tied, no.
Okay, but that is how it's managed? Is by those three areas?
So those are essentially, when we start figuring up what, how much percentage you need to, to save, or, you know, our downtown district is probably the least restrictive. And then as you work out to the suburban level, that's where it gets, you know, there's more options out in suburban level. I'll go over, there's a couple charts here in a second that I'll actually go over. I'll never find it. Dismiss. Thank you, Chris. I got a little box. I might be good with trees, but I'm horrible with technology. I'm sorry, my bad. So calculation, when we, when, I should say, developers or engineers or landscape architects actually do their calculations on the trees that they are wishing to preserve or, or plant, they can do that three, three different ways primarily. So measuring the drip line, that's usually done through aerial photography, you know, different types of GIS programs, web-based apps, that sort of thing. And those are usually developments that are over two acres in size, because they don't want to go in and measure every single tree, so they'll just kind of pick an area. Field measurements, most accurate, that's when you're actually going in and you're stretching a tape underneath the canopy of the tree, you're taking on a perpendicular and you're taking an average of that. It's probably the most accurate, and no one ever does it, because it takes so much time. Now, I hear that a lot, but, you know, I know foresters who could probably go out and knock out a hundred canopies in, you know, an hour or two hours. So it's not like a big deal. Honestly, you get more bang for your buck if you're doing it that way than you are doing drip line, or the third option there is measuring the DBH of the tree, and then we have a table that they can use, and they can, based on that table and the tree class, they can say, you know, this is a 20-inch tree, it's a medium tree class, it's worth 920 square feet. So it's just a standard and an average, and, but it's usually a lot less than it would be if you went out and measured the tree yourself. And also, we'll add there, the critical root zone, so you're not just, we're not just saving the canopy of the tree, so when we talk about tree canopy preservation and tree canopy preservation area, we also include that root, that critical root zone. And the critical root zone is calculated for every inch of diameter is, is one foot linear distance from the tree. So, you know, if some, somebody, for instance, picks a drip line measurement, and they have a straight line, and they just have a little box where they, you know, want their tree canopy to be, it's not actually where the tree canopy preservation area is going to be. There's going to be like little loops in there because of the critical root zone that they haven't figured out yet. So honestly, you know, you end up probably with more tree canopy area than you would. If you just chose 15% for a certain area, you may end up coming, once you did the critical root zone calculations, you're probably looking at 18, 19% for that area. Excluded areas, a lot of these I haven't really run across yet. Five and six are probably the, the biggest ones, but, and these are drainage easements, cross, cross-access easements, government utility easements that prohibit trees, both above and above, above and below ground, so we can't necessarily plant trees over sewer lines. We can plant small trees, but not big trees. We can't do trees in utility easements, you know, that are carrying, you know, hot-voltage wires and that sort of thing. So we have to keep those, those trees to a minimum. Any easement authorizing tree disturbing activities? I don't know really what that is. I would imagine it's probably forestry-related in some, some capacity. Number five, areas devoted to future transportation and stormwater infrastructure. I've run across this situation a lot, where they had a big tree canopy area, there happened to be a future greenway, the greenway wasn't in there yet, but we had to deny them that area, and they had to split those areas into two. Now, that greenway can encroach 20% into the tree canopy or into the, the critical root zone area, but they can't be, it can't just dissect a tree canopy area. Number six, no structures or improvements in preservation areas. So once again, this is kind of dealing with your critical root zone, buildings, parking lots. This is kind of where that, that landscaping that you can possibly potentially calculate for your, your tree canopy preservation, if that critical root zone encroaches into a parking lot within that, you know, 20%, then we, we have to deny that tree for that, that property. Options to meet the requirements, so you can either preserve, plant, or pay. Three Ps, man. So preserve existing healthy dominant and co-dominant trees, so we don't allow understory trees to be counted as canopy, even though they are typically, or can, are considered a part of the whole canopy. You can plant, install new trees, following our plant requirements, and then you can also pay a fee in lieu process. Fee in lieu, I see a lot of people down, a lot of folks downtown will use fee in lieu because they just don't have anywhere to plant trees, and they don't have any trees to preserve. The city of Asheville does provide a tree preservation calculator, which you can see here on the screen, and you just enter your information, you hit submit, and it tells you exactly what you have. So it's pretty easy, straightforward. This is kind of getting back to that, that resource overlay, and it kind of shows you, you know, where that happens. We have three classes. We have Class A, Class B, and Class C. And, you know, you have your land uses, you have, downtown is pretty much all Class A, suburban is Class C, and then urban can be a mixture of the two, and I'll go over some other tables here that kind of show that. So looking at this table, you have Class A. This would be some, somewhere downtown that may or may not have anywhere to plant. So if it, if it does have existing canopy, and you could save some of that canopy, and you have 5% to save, then you wouldn't have to plant any trees on top of that, and your total requirement for that site would only be 5%. What I typically see is areas that don't want to preserve certain areas, so, and then they could plant 10%, but most of them will just pay the fee in lieu of 10%. Yeah?
Just a quick question on this, because this was something that was bouncing around for some confusion on a project that I was working on. Is the 5% or the 10% or whatever's in this table, is that of the developed site, or is that 5% of the canopy that's on the site?
So yeah, that's 5% of the whole square footage of the site. So that's the total square footage of the site, and so if you have those canopies there and you can preserve 5%, then you would only be required to preserve 5%. Like, if you had 20% on that site of that, whatever that square footage was, you would only be required to, if you were going to preserve the whole thing and not plant, you would only be required to preserve 5% of that. So you can actually cut the other 15% and, or remove the other 15%. Or you can do a combination of, you know, all three of those that I just talked about, about, you know, you can, you know, preserve 1%, you can plant 8%, and then your total tree canopy required would be 9%. The idea is that we're incentivizing folks to preserve over planting and fee in lieu. That's why those, those values are so, so much lower than, you know, if you just choose to just, you know, cut them all down, not replant, and just pay the fee in lieu. Class B, once again, it's pretty much the, the same situation, so this is mainly in your urban districts. And, you know, as, the further you move out, your requirement becomes greater and greater. Obviously, there's not a lot of trees down here in the downtown area, so as you move further out in our urban area, it gets a little bit greater, and so as you can see at the bottom there, if you're not, if you have a, a site that has, you know, what, 40, 40% of the, the site, you don't want to preserve anything, you don't want to plant anything, then your fee in lieu would be based on a 15% for that urban overlay district. And I'll show you a better one here. This is your Class C, this is suburban. So we actually had a case this morning where we had a developer who had some trees in there, they proposed to preserve, you know, probably seven or eight trees that I think came to maybe 8,000 square feet. Well, after looking at that plan, you know, those trees were covered by kudzu, other invasives, some of the trees were actually diseased, and so I essentially disqualified those trees, and so we decided they couldn't use them. So instead, what the plan, what we came up with was, if they went ahead and planted the whole site, so they actually chose not to preserve any trees, even though they were already started on grading, so it kind of got them after the grading period. So they were like, well, you know, what happens if we plant all our trees? Because they were also dealing with open space at the same time, and there's a requirement that, you know, after you go over a certain threshold, you don't have to do open space. And so that's what this situation happened to be. This is the first time it ever happened to me, and I was like, you know, wow, I just learned something new today. So, so what happened was, is they end up agreeing to planting 25%, it made their plans a lot easier, and, you know, everyone came out on top. So instead of them going back in and, and trying to save, you know, eight really spindly trees and plant 30 trees, they're just going to agree to go ahead and plant 50 trees and be done with it, and, and, you know, out the door from there.
How do we determine the trade-off between an existing tree and like a planted tree?
So it's completely up to the developer.
I mean, what's the, right, so like, how do we determine? We have a formula, right, for a canopy that can be accredited for a DB?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So either that, you know, that drip line, you can do the DBH plus the, the table if you want to do it that way, and then you can actually measure the, the actual crown in the field. So, I mean, whether...
I'm talking of planted trees, though, so like as a substitution, in lieu of preserving, let's say we need to preserve 15%, let's say we preserve five, and we're planting to make up for the other 10%.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So essentially, the way that happens, I don't have that chart here, so if you have a large canopy class tree, and it's over 10 inches, it accounts, it's for our maximum square footage, which is 1,600 square feet. If you plant a large, large class planted tree, those are 560 square feet each. So you, for every, you know, large tree that counts for 1,600 square feet preserved, you would have to plant three large maturing, or large class trees to make up to that square footage. Does that make sense?
No, that makes perfect sense, and they have to be planted at, what, one and a half, two-inch DBH?
Yeah, so the, the requirement is they, they have to be two-inch caliper, 12 to 14 feet tall.
Okay.
And they, they can be evergreens as well, but most people, because evergreens are in our medium class or our small class, which means, you know, their width isn't as big, so, you know, the bang for your buck is to plant trees that have big canopies. There's only, on our species list, I think, 12 or 13 trees that have what we would consider a large canopy class, so most folks will go ahead and use those, those, those trees. And all those trees, those 12 or 13, are all native species to this area.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, you can do three two, two-inch caliper white oaks that would make up about the same square footage of, let's say, a 24-inch white oak?
Yeah, if, if you're taking that DBH and you're applying it to the table, the maximum you can get is 1,600 square feet for that. However, if you go out in the field and you would measure that in the field, you would probably get 3,200, 4,000 square feet for that canopy. That's why, you know, it makes sense to go out and measure your, each single canopy, you're going to get more bang for your buck. But if you just want to do the quick and easy and take the DBH, you know, most of the folks that are doing this are surveyors, as they go through the field and they're surveying lots, they will actually just go ahead and they'll geolocate the trees, they'll take the DBH and they'll move on. That's the quick and easy way to do it, and that's what most people do. So that will essentially, you know, it kind of, it really dials down, you know, what you can really claim on that site, you know, where, whereas, you know, if you do it the DBH way, you may have 10 trees. If you do it, you know, the field way, you might only have to do four trees, based on how big those canopy are. But if you go ahead and plant, obviously you're going to have to probably plant 20 trees to make up to that, that threshold, that square footage.
Sure, and I'm just curious, I mean, as far as actual, we're getting credit for the two-inch caliper tree, you're getting credit for 540 square feet. How long is it going to take that white oak to get, to cover that square footage?
Quite a while.
Yeah.
As you know, white oaks grow fairly slow, they're, they're pretty much medium growers. Now, most people and most things that I see coming through my review, white oak is probably one of those trees that, you know, you don't see too often. A lot of people will plant, you know, either the pin oak, they'll plant the red oaks, they'll plant the black oaks, which are a little faster growing. They will also, I, I, even though it's a slower-growing tree, I like American Beech a whole lot, because I know further on down the road, it's either going to sprout, it's going to put out a lot of seed, and essentially it's going to build that forest over time. So even though just maybe one tree or three trees that they plant, I know as time... So even though just maybe one tree or three trees that they plant, I know as time goes on and it gets up to that stage where it's actually gonna start seeding and reproducing, that it's gonna actually build that forest over time as, uh-
Right, so, right, okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is this calculation, how was it determined, um, that you get credit for 540 square feet for a two-inch caliper tree versus 1,600 for a mature tree? I'm, I'm just wondering, like, what the science is behind it?
I don't know. Uh, that's kinda what I came into. I came into these charts and just kinda apply, apply all these charts.
Sure.
Uh, I think, you know, it, it was, it was a mixture of, uh, if Chris, Chris can probably answer that.
Yeah, I can help. Um, Chris Collins, Assistant Director of Planning and Urban Design. Uh, when we were working on developing this ordinance, like with many ordinances, we took benchmarks from other communities. Um, and really, 1,600 was the largest allowance we found for the preservation when we were looking at it per, per trunk, right, um, on a credit-based, so.
I don't mind it on that end.
Oh.
It's the 500 and 5, I'm providing so much credit for such a spindly tree that's not providing any seed.
Sure, sure.
You know?
Sure, so for the planted-
Or habitat, or carbon sequestration, or-
That was actually, we, we worked down to get to that number. I hear what you're saying, but we actually had to kinda negotiate our way down from the full canopy credit for planting because we wanted to preserve that incentive for preservation over planting. Um, and we did this all in conjunction with the Urban Forestry Committee as kind of our steering committee through this ordinance, but we also counterbalanced that off of other groups such as the Development Customer Advisory Group. Um, we had a whole roadshow, everybody from the home builders to the chamber, um, that we were working off of back and forth to kinda make sure we had a balanced approach to it. So quite simply, we wanted to give less credit for planted trees to preserve that incentive, um, but kinda through that push and pull, that's the number we landed at, so.
Yeah, so, and, and that's for the, the large class tree, which I said, uh, you know, it was only about a dozen or so trees in our list. When you drop down to medium, medium's a 315 square foot, uh, you know, um, coverage for that planted tree. And those, you know, we probably have 80 or 90 in our list that are medium. And then smalls or even less than that, they're 140.
Yeah, I gotta s- it's kinda interesting because I admittedly know very little about forestry, carbon sequestration, that sort of thing, but when I look at it from a development standpoint, you have the protected root zone, I-
Critical root zone.
Critical root zone. And what I've heard about carbon sequestration is that these preserved trees provide a massive carbon, um, offset compared to new planted trees. Um, so from a development perspective, it's kinda interesting that you're sacrificing quite a lot of site space to preserve these trees, especially if they were to be preserved in the urban area, you know? If you're talking about even a 10-foot round tree, you know, it, I'm guessing that's, uh, radius, a 10-foot radius, so that's 20 feet across on a relatively small site? Is that kind of the correct calculation?
For the critical zones?
That's a little big, it's a little big.
20-foot.
Uh, I'm not necessarily, I, I could probably, um, what is it? It's pi, pi R squared times the, the, the radius, uh, you know, whatever the radius from the pi to the adder.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about square footage, I was talking about literally just the radius out, uh, would be a 20-foot diameter circle for the critical root-
I think diameter, the diameter of the critical root zone being 20 feet is reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Oh, so, oh, you're talking, so yeah, so for like a, a 10-inch tree, for instance, it would be 10 inches from the edge of the tree outward, uh, that we would protect that area right there.
10 inches.
10 feet.
Yeah. And that's what I'm getting, so when I'm thinking about that 20-foot, you know, diameter, you're going across 10 feet each direction from the center point-
Correct, yeah.
-of the circle. Sorry to be a nerd here, but why it matters is that that could be a lot of parking, that could be a lot of square footage of building, it could, it comes with a tremendous development cost.
Sure.
And so when I look through like landscape buffers and tree credits and things like that, I just wonder how balanced we are, um, across the board when it comes to providing a true, the true preservation benefit to our community and the cost it may have with the development community.
Yes, I would, I would, I would be interested to see with recent developments, since the ordinance has taken place, how much of the credit for new planting was utilized versus sheer preservation of existing canopy?
And we do have those numbers.
You do, okay.
Yeah. In the Urban Forestry Commission, we have a, uh, Tree Protection Ordinance chart, uh, that we present each meeting, uh, and it gives those numbers. Uh, I think right now, uh, you know, preserved is somewhere 2.2 million square feet, uh, is preserved. I think there was, don't quote me on this, 300,000 of planted square feet. So there is definitely more preserved square footage out there than there is planted square footage, uh, only because those numbers are a little bit bigger, but-
The square footage, yeah, 'cause they're, they're obviously mature trees.
Sure, sure.
I'm, I'm just curious, the percentage breakdown, like, if I have to preserve 15%, you know, let's say, wha- what is, what is, what is the average of, since the tree canopy protection's been in place of like, how much of that 15% is preserved versus new planting or fee in lieu, for example? And so like, you don't have to tell me right now.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of it and-
No, I'm just, I'm just more just curious of like, how much are we truly, you know, I, yeah, sorry for everyone in the audience, we are getting a little wonky here with-
No, 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 I think it's good because it, it impacts development significantly.
It does.
Um, and I believe there are landscape variances that come through your board, correct?
Uh, none that have ever come through mine, no.
Yeah, I think I sat in one called 7, 740 Amer. Avenue.
We do have alternative compliance.
Yeah.
Uh, like if you can mo- cannot meet that requirement for, you know, one of seven reasons, then you can, you know, either have that reduced, uh, you can have it completely, you know, thrown out. Uh, we have a development coming up next week, uh, that is downtown, that will, you know, uh, where they're probably not gonna be required to plant or pay anything at that point because of there's under such a, such a hardship. You know, it's essentially, the building is the footprint-
Yeah.
-of the, of the lot. So, you know, they won't have to either, uh, they don't have anything to preserve, they have nowhere to plant, and they, I don't think they'll have to pay.
Hey Keith, if I could check in on one thing real quick, Commissioner Cycle, you're looking for percentages of what we're seeing in compliance, people who are doing it pres- preserving versus planting versus, okay. Will, we can derive that data and get back to you on that, definitely. Um, yeah, just wanted to clarify, I know what you're looking for.
Cool, we're good?
Um, yeah, I just would like to add that it would be really great to also, um, have included the, the fee in lieu summary. So, um, just how much, you know, money we're accruing, um, along that path as well, 'cause I've seen, I've taken a glance at it and it seems like we're actually generating a significant nest egg for some utilization.
Yeah, so, uh, the fee in lieu and the way that's handled, I think I have a slide in here about it. Uh, essentially, in our urban district right now, we have $286,000. Uh, in our, uh, downtown district, I think it's 90 or, or 38, and, and suburban, I think is somewhere around, um, you know, pretty much 100,000. So, and then we have, you know, outstanding payments that haven't come in yet, we just had one that's, you know, recently closed that, you know, it alone is $268,000, uh, because they didn't wanna preserve anything. So, so, but that money, uh, we still have to write a policy for that money. And essentially, what we're looking to do with that money is to provide free trees, uh, to plant trees, you know, throughout Asheville, develop our nurseries that we've already gotten started with the Greenworks. Uh, so we wanna put more nurseries in within the city so that we can have those trees available within those neighborhoods, you know, on a moment's notice, uh, should someone want a free tree or, or be able to, you know, um, pay a little bit for it. So, you know, we do have plans, we just have to write a policy for it. Cool, we're good?
All right, I got a couple more questions, but I'm gonna let you-
No, go, go, uh, yeah, I only got a couple more and then we'll, we'll, we'll go for some questions. So as, as far as documentation is concerned, uh, TCP does have to have its own plat. Uh, so, uh, and that has to be registered with the Buncombe County, uh, Registered Deeds Office, uh, and it has to have a note on there saying that it, areas designated as tree canopy protection areas shall remain in perpetuity, tree removal shall be prohibited in these areas unless otherwise permitted. And the reason we put that in there is because sometimes they put TCP on lot, individual lots. And so even though someone thinks that they're buying this lot with these trees on it, they're actually buying a lot with preserved trees on it that they cannot touch or cut down unless they have a permit. All right, that's it. Questions? Uh, and I put these two pictures in here, this is actually my house. Uh, so this is what 11 years of, of, uh, you know, uh, tree growth will do. So 2010 is on the left, uh, all, I, all the trees I wanted to plant are right there.
I love it.
There's actually 800 trees planted on the left, uh, and this is 2021, 11 years later.
That's awesome.
So, you know, it doesn't take that long.
That's great, Keith. That actually leads into my, my next question, which is, and it's kind of a little, I think it's a little bit of a leading question, but, um, how important is the variety of age in the health of a, of an urban canopy? Like, age of the canopy, like, the trees within the canopy?
Well, I mean, it's huge. I mean, you ha- you need multi-ages, you know, in the forest, uh, as you know. I mean, obviously, if everything, everything's, you know, even-aged or monocultured, you know, obviously, you have a problem, uh, you're gonna have more problem with, uh, disease and pests. And, you know, if, you know, all that canopy dies at once, or all those, you know, because they're of, of even age or they're, you know, of the same species or like species, then that pretty much all dies. And then, you know, we don't have anything out of that forest at that point.
So how troubling would it be if every development shows fee in lieu solely?
It, it would be, well, it, it would be, it would be troubling, however, uh, you know, one of the things about, about fee in lieu is that they don't necessarily, uh, are saving or planting trees, however, they still have the required landscaping, which on this development that came in that, you know, has this very big fee in lieu, they have to plant 200 trees in their landscaping, in the large maturing trees. So, you know, it's not necessarily it's gonna be barren landscape like a desert, there are gonna be trees, there's gonna be vegetation there, yeah, it's gonna take a long time to grow up to, you know, when it matures, and it's probably not gonna be as healthy 'cause it's in a little, you know, square pot or, you know, a little island or whatever, but it, it's, it's still there. It's, it'll still provide canopy 20, 30 years down the road.
20, 30, okay. And then my last question is, has there been any consideration, at least from staff perspective, on, um, like heritage tree or like a tree tree being considered as like preservation for a, a large trees, 30-inch, 36-inch DBH?
Yeah, so the Urban Forestry Commission has, uh, you know, put that kinda language out there. Uh, we do have, uh, on the books, uh, what we call a historic tree. Uh, and that's pretty much any tree that anybody wants to nominate, uh, you know, the, I guess, not really the problem, but, you know, it has to go through a certain set of stages and committees and, and that sort of thing, but it has to be voted on by council.
And that's, that's in conjunction with Greenworks, am I correct?
Is, with what?
With Greenworks.
No, no, that's just on, that's in our UDO right now. So we have what we call historic trees, and we can actually preserve historic trees with council approval. Now, what, what you're talking about is, uh, the Urban Forestry Commission has, uh, you know, um, done, um, some language, uh, I think it was, uh, I believe it was since, well, maybe it was 719, uh, to actually, you know, designate a, um, a legacy tree or, uh, there was another term that they put in there.
Yeah, it's another term.
But it would basically preserve-
Treasure tree.
My neighbor has it.
There you go. So it would actually, in, instead of getting council approval, it would be based on a DBH of a certain tree, uh, and it has to be in a certain site and it, you know, it would probably have a lot of constraints on it as far as, you know, what can be developed around it and that sort of thing, so, so yeah, it's-
I can add, just, just to clarify, there, there's a draft update to 719, Article 19 that we're talking about tonight that does include, that does have the inclusion of a heritage tree definition and increased credit for preserving said heritage tree over, um, not preserving it, so.
You said there's language we're looking at tonight?
No, not tonight.
Oh, okay.
You will see.
I thought he said tonight.
Sometime in the near future. It's been working its way through the Urban Forestry Commission.
Okay, awesome.
It's a suite of updates to Article 7, to Section 7, Article 19, based on the lessons we've learned since the original adoption, um, and that will eventually work its way to Planning and Zoning Commission for review.
But yeah, a good place to start would be the Greenworks treasure tree list. Uh, I actually re-sampled that list in 2007, I, I re-sampled 115 trees, so I'm very familiar with just about every single one of them.
Awesome.
Well, thank you, Mr.-
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. So next on our agenda, we will move into our first public hearing item, and, uh, just as a reminder, um, we accept public comment on public hearing items in a variety of ways. In advance, we can receive written comments if you email to pzcommissioners@ashvillenc.gov, and then, uh, we will at the end of a presentation and applicant, uh, comments, open up public hearing for each of the public hearing items on our agenda. So our first, um, legislative public hearing is a request to conditionally rezone property located at 57 Max Street from residential single-family high-density RS8 to residential multifamily high, uh, medium-density conditional zone RM8 CZ. The property is identified as PIN 9648597392 in the Buncombe County tax record. The property owner is Preservation Society of Asheville in Buncombe County, the applicant contact is Nicholas Bowman, and planner coordinating review is Clay Mitchell. So, Mr. Mitchell?
Commissioners, how are you? Um, good evening, this is a conditional zoning petition, um, a little bit different than what we do, it doesn't, it's not going into an expansion district, it's going into a conditional zone RM8, which I will explain as we go through the process. Uh, this is the site, which is actually just south of here, uh, the Stevens Lee Community Center is the large building on the left side of the larger picture. The red dot is the, um, what is, has a, a church building that has a couple of names, um, the most commonly used one is the Cappadocia Church, uh, and that's a blow-up of it, uh, over here on the screen right section, and you can see this grass area, uh, to the side of the church, kind of northeast of the church building. Um, what's kinda interesting about the existing site is there's no vehicle access, there is a pedestrian access off this small stub, which is coming off of what I believe is called Old Max Street, um, and then there's a little bit of an intersection here where Old Max Street hits Max Street. So that's the existing conditions. What you can't really ever tell with our aerial photos is that there is a slope, uh, in the site going from the southwest toward the northeast. So the, the house to the northeast of the church is actually up maybe 10 feet, uh, from the, the bottom line, and maybe the develop team can correct me, from the church. And that, that has, that has relevance to a couple of the items that I'm gonna talk about in the site plan. Uh, the, the green square is the property we're talking about, it's kinda hard to see on this, it's down here. Uh, this will become RM8-dash-CZ on our maps, it will be a conditional zone. Uh, the, the orange areas are already zoned RM8, and that, that yellow section is RS8. And again, up here is the, uh, Stevens Lee Community Center. Um, and then there's, uh, different types of zoning districts, uh, further to the south, but predominantly, this area of the East End neighborhood is either zoned RM8 or RS8. Uh, it's located in, uh, the neighborhood, the legacy neighborhood of East End, it's designated on future land use map as a traditional neighborhood, uh, it's across the street almost directly from the Stevens Lee, you have to walk up a little bit to get to the pedestrian access. Um, there is a small paper, well, I shouldn't call it paper streets, that's another area. There, there's a small drawn, uh, right-of-way or paper street that is residual. This, this area, I believe it, it, back in the early 1920s, uh, was divided into 50 lots and there were all these right-of-ways, that right-of-way is, is present, it's kinda hard to see on this, you'll see it on the plans. Uh, the property owner, you already know, um, and I, Nick, Nicholas, are you okay? That's nice. We do so much work, the electronic- We do so much work electronically, I've never seen some of these people.
It's good to see you.
So if you're familiar with this area, this is the view. You can see the slope from the lower right to the left, the pedestrian, it's kind of stairwell leading up to the front of the church building, a couple of steps and retaining walls, and you can see the kind of, you know, odd street configuration where Old Max comes into Max Street. So when we get to the site plan, first, what obviously jumps out in that grass area, there will be a driveway added to the site, some parking, and the church is proposed to be adaptably reconstructed into three residential units. And not, spoiler alert, one of the challenges with this and the reason that it's coming before you as a conditional zoning is we have a requirement that when you have an RM district, abutting an RS district, there needs to be a 20-foot buffer. This is a very small parcel. It's a tremendous impact on the developability of the parcel, so technical modifications are required in order to achieve this adaptive reuse. The parcel size is roughly a quarter of an acre, and the new access is at a, a good location for site distance in either direction. It's as far away from that old Max Street intersection as possible, providing site distance, and also gives this buffer to the abutting parcel. Working during the technical review committee, we were able to get that, worked with the applicant on, on reducing that driveway so it looks like a residential driveway, so it's a little bit narrower than we would see on a multifamily, but there's, there's not a lot of concerns from traffic engineering about having that narrow of a driveway because it's only serving three units. Then as you get up into the site, you see the required parking, a couple of other hardscape infrastructure like sidewalks, providing access to safe refuge areas on the site, and I can, I'll go into that a little bit later as well. There will be, I will show you, you know, a better plan, some of the landscaping and areas that were, are going to be provided. There's two parking spots for bicycles external to the site, and I'm sure that there will be ways for residents to store bikes in their units or inside as well. The, the remainder of the site plan accounts for the increase in impervious surface. Here you see some of the stormwater management system, including new piping and a small storage facility there, kind of then retention and detention in the center of the site in the gray. There is, there are going to be retaining walls, so that slope is going to be brought down to create a level site, so there will be a retaining wall that faces into the property with the existing grade at the top of the wall, carrying to the northeast, to the property to the northeast. It is, well, within walking distance of downtown, across from Charlotte Street, the N5 transit route is nearby, on Martin Luther King Drive, and obviously Stevens Lee Community Center is proximate. All in all, those are all components that contribute to us wanting to see this type of diverse housing opportunities being preserved in these neighborhoods. When we get to the landscaping plan, this is where we start to see some of the needs for technical modifications. Street trees are shown. The buffer requirement would be 20 feet, which would come about halfway from the property line to the church building. The applicant has requested a technical modification. They do show a little bit of modification in the plant selection, but, but the urban forester has been working with the applicant. There's been some changes in distribution and identification, but overall, we've arrived at a plan that we think balances the interest. One of the things that I want to highlight in the lower right image here, I think this is a very cool amenity added to the site, those three rectangles are individual tenant garden space for the residents, and I think that's, you know, personally, I have no professional data to support this, but I think it's cool. And so it's something I thought was a really forward-thinking way that the owners and the applicant have brought forward. It is in, within that buffer area, and I think it's a really interesting way to kind of promote that connection to the outside, and I frankly would rather see that than maybe more kind of cultivated plantings in that location. And, and remember that that retaining wall comes down, you know, if you don't, you might think, oh, everything's getting close to that property to the northeast, but the applicant shows landscaping at the top of that retaining wall, the retaining wall, and then landscaping at the bottom. So I, I think that will soften that transition between this use and the abutting property with all that additional hardscape. So tree canopy protection, I keep pointing back there like Keith's still here, so there are no existing canopy protection being put on this site, so they're gonna plant this tree in the lower corner there, and then meet the rest of the requirements with a fee and lieu. Because of the scope and scale of the site, it does not require open space, so none is designated on the plan. The technical modification relates to the buffer and the landscaping. There's a couple of reasons. One, those community garden spaces, the need to provide a safe dispersal area, that has to be a certain distance from the building, and that's up here in kind of the center, so where this pavement comes right up against the retaining wall. That's the required accessible route for people to be able to vacate the building in the case of an emergency, particularly a fire. So part of that area is devoted to enhanced landscaping here, the dispersal area, and then the three garden plots here at the, kind of the rear of the site. The modified plantings, it's just a selection of the species. It, it, the number and the counts are roughly the same, maybe even actually in excess, but, but there was a different selection because of the scale and scope of the site. So it's a more detail-oriented landscaping requirements than just complying with what our regulations require. So ultimately, we support this technical modification because it is so attuned to the actual use of the site, so that's the extent of the technical modifications. This was reviewed and approved by the Technical Review Committee on March 18th. We're here before you tonight. The tentative date for the city council is May 28th, so in about three weeks. What I have for you in this, and doesn't relate to anything really, is the, is the facades as a result of the construction. So you can see the preservation of the existing building with some fenestration attention and, and what this building looks like with the, the two small parapets there and the, and the triangular roof in the center. So really interesting preservation project. So these are my ancillary comments. This is not something I would normally include, but I, I feel that this is noteworthy, and your intellectual curiosity might be piqued by some of this. This, this application, I think, is, is an interesting attempt to dovetail into the vision plan of the East End. Some of the highlights that I found in that plan about a diverse neighborhood that is a neighborhood, maintaining neighborhood gardens, preserving history and heritage. Those are three of the comments that really stood out to me when I reviewed the East End vision plan. The Preservation Society of the owner, this quote, I, I linked to it in my report, it's a very extensive, detailed history of this building, and it was a real interesting read for, for me to get. And of course, I went, what is the meaning of the name? It, it, it has some biblical origin. There's a lot of historical academic work on this site, and there, there is some hint that one of the folks who did the research feels that this may be a reference to Cappadocia, Turkey, where early Christians viewed that as a place of refuge and, and, and the place of refuge on the hill. That is some indication that that may be an origin of the name. I just thought that would be an interesting tidbit. When we look at this from a compatibility analysis and compliance with the Living Asheville Comp Plan, this is in an area where there are diverse opportunities for residential supply on smaller lots. This lot, if you recall, that size is actually a little bigger. However, because it's preserving the existing building, there really is no impact on the visual height, mass, or floor area of the building. There just is going to be use there now, and those would be those three residential uses. Furthermore, on two of the three sized, actually a but zoning districts, one, the one side of butts the road, two of those are already RM8 districts. So it's, it's just a, a, you know, to a certain extent, an expansion of that district to accommodate this lot. When we get into the comp plan and the goals, these are ones that we spend a lot of time seeing, because we do a lot of residential conditional zonings. Responsible growth, that's housing, that is walkable, it's walkable to downtown, it's walkable to a transit route, it's walkable to the Stevens Lee Community Center, creates that efficient urban environment, struggling to provide opportunities that are not only diverse, but within this core of the downtown area. It increases and diversifies the housing supply, and when we talk about that in the comp plan, we talk about that directly with respect to proximity to schools, transit, and parks, as well as to the fact that this is a very small-scale multifamily, but it provides that kind of mix in the location. And then finally, we talked about this a little bit in, in the Kessler Hotel application, but, but here, we, we have great architecture and urban design to enhance placemaking by adaptively reusing a building that has a significant and deep historic connection to the area of Catholic Hill. And so those are the three top compliance analysis points that I was able to find. And so it's, it's our, our analysis is, is that it is consistent with several of the plan's goals, as well as other adopted plans for the location, and, and we believe that you would be justified in, in making a recommendation and support to the council on this application. And that was a little longer, but I just, it was so interesting, I wanted to give it some time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for a great presentation. Thank you for the added historical and neighborhood context as well. I think that's really important for this proposal, so really appreciate that. I really have two questions for you. A couple of things I latched onto, you said this is within walking distance of downtown, and you also highlighted the reason that we're here as a CZ is the required 20-foot buffer between RM and RS districts. It, it seems to me also there's one added piece of why we're here, and it's the parking requirement. So this site has four parking spaces, one accessible parking space, three other parking spaces to meet the city's minimum parking requirement of three, one per unit. And have there been any discussions with the applicant about whether parking is desired? If, if a parking requirement were alleviated, couldn't we lose the retaining wall, the buffer exception, and would this be a CZ if the parking requirement were not in place?
That, I have to admit, that's very forward-thinking, Commissioner, and it might be something that I, as staff, am not usually comfortable asking those questions, but it is an interesting question. I think that that would be most appropriately addressed to the applicants and the owners.
Great. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
On a side note, Clay, if you ever start a podcast, let me know. You always bring great content.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I do, I want to reiterate that the neighborhood, particularly in our legacy neighborhoods, like acknowledging the history that's there, and the fact that this is adaptive reuse and allowing historic structures to find a new life in a new way is, is really important, and it's one of the most, as far as I'm aware, with the comp plan, one of the most aligned things we can do is find ways to reuse the structures that are already in place.
One last clarification before we hear from the applicant. The provision of stormwater on this site, stormwater management, is triggered by an increase in impervious surface, is that right?
Yes.
So if this were just a straight adaptive reuse of the building itself without, say, a parking lot, would that, would there be a stormwater?
I, I think that there would have to be some analysis done, but I think that, that avenue would open up. I, I, there is some limited amount of, of impervious surface there, and I don't know at what point that would be triggered, because there would definitely have to be an accessible connection to the entrance of the building from the roadway.
Great.
And I, I did do this, in case you ask, this might, given your first question, the red rectangle, and this is by no means professional, is roughly what the buffer would look like on that property. And then that high-intensity graphic on the left is my attempt to show what the, that's landscaping at the bottom, a retaining wall and landscaping at the top.
I think it's time to bring up the professional designers to speak to this development. But thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Hey, my name's Nick Bowman, I'm with Davis Civil Solutions. We're the civil engineer on the project. I also have the project architect and the Preservation Society Board Chair here, too, that they can answer some questions. But just to answer one, you were kind of toying with the idea of not having any parking at all. I think it's gonna be tough, because there's going to be an accessible unit, multiple perhaps, that would be accessible. All three units would be accessible from the parking area, but they would not be accessible if we were to park somewhere else. There's no way to get an accessible route from the public way to the structure and any of the residential units that we had. But yeah, I mean, it's a great, it's a great thought.
Are you taking questions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I didn't know if you were presenting anything. I really just have, I think this is a fantastic project. I just have one question, and that is, since you are required to put in stormwater, and it's on the plans, is there any consideration from the applicant to, and is there space in the storm tech system to feed the roof water? Right? Because right now, the downspouts are not connected according to the plans.
That's correct. It has been discussed a little bit with Buncombe County Stormwater Ordinance, or, sorry, City of Asheville Stormwater Ordinance. You kind of get credit for existing impervious surface, so anything that's there, we wouldn't necessarily have to account for. It's anything that we add.
Correct, yeah.
So, so absolutely, I mean, we would be open to that possibility of collecting that roof water.
Yeah, so my thought is, if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's not an undue burden, if it's not increasing the size of the system that you're thinking about.
We would have to recalculate to see what the change would be in the storage volume adding the roof drainage. We would have to do that.
Or even, because it is a pitch.
And it might be tricky.
Because it is a pitch.
That's right. So it could be maybe half. Yep. That's a potential option, yep.
I just, that would, that's just something I noted when I was looking through the plans.
Yeah. It's definitely an option.
And without noting out too much, where is the storm drain for the site? Would it be easy to tie into from a roof drain leader? I don't want to, like, totally discuss.
Can I?
Up or down?
Oh, okay.
Right, so his, the downspout is, yeah.
Okay. So that kind of gray rectangle is the detention system, as Clay was mentioning. So all of, there's a couple of inlets in the street, or in the parking lot, a couple in the driveway coming in, and then we're taking that water down and connecting to an existing structure in Max Street. So, yeah, we, we could probably get into that one that's in the parking lot fairly easily.
And you'd just drop it right into that box, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Assuming that we have the elevation to do it.
The elevation and the capacity.
Yeah, you know, if it's coming down, you know, we would just, it would have to be looked at.
I don't want to, I don't want to derail anything. I love this project. I just, I thought it would be an extra bonus to capture.
Sure.
Half of something that wasn't already being captured and was just running right off into the street.
Sure, sure. Again, it would have to be, we would have to calculate, you know, the area is, is not all that much, so I doubt that it would have any impact on the size of the system, and, and probably would accommodate that.
I have two quick questions. One, the fee and lieu portion being paid for part of the trees, I was curious if you were staff and you like ballpark what that number was.
The cost?
Correct.
You're probably looking at somewhere around $5.75 a square foot. So multiply $5.75 by that amount, so it's, you know, gonna be $7,000-ish, maybe?
And I ask that just not to attack or anything, I, I ask that to show that, you know, to the public that people doing these projects are paying into the funds like Keith, the forester you were just talking about, and supporting those projects or projects like that. This go to help. This go to help supporting those initiatives, which I think is great. My second question, at that retaining wall, at this point in time, is there a plan for, like, the composition of that? I mean, is that a cast-in-place wall? Is that a boulder wall?
We've had, has the, just discussions with Geotek's designing the retaining walls. Because we're getting away from some of the foreground landscaping because of the retaining wall height, we have to either face the wall with natural or artificial stone. So, it's going to probably be, we're hoping it'll be like a verta block or ready rock type of thing that's, that's formed, that has a rock face look to it.
Right. And I, I love the facade of those types of products, but I feel like those are actually much deeper than what's, like, drawn on the plan. You know, those, those blocks are, you know, two and a half foot deep.
These are, these are the conversations we've had with the Geotek.
And so that kind of gets into the planting strip, you know, behind it and such.
So, as, on, on the, if you're looking at the west side of the site, that retaining wall is about four or five feet. So, it's not very big over there. It's when you get in the corner where the wall turns, that's the nine-foot section. And the way that those gravity walls work, the lower portions of the wall have a mass, they call it a mass extender. So, that goes further back in, into it. And then as it steps up, the top of the wall gets more narrow.
Correct.
So, it, we, these are discussions we've had with the Geotek, where he's working through the design right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
One last, is there a developer here?
Yeah, Preservation Society Board Chair is here.
I just had a, and you don't have to come up and answer this question if you want to answer it or whatever. It's just really a comment. I think that the planner boxes for the residents are really cool. I don't know if they're going to be, tended to be raised or not. I know this is obviously really early, but with the, the size of the wall kind of covered in on two sides, I have concerns with survivability.
Sure. And so, we, the placement, there was a lot of thought given to the placement. Because we're going to have an accessible route, we have to provide a safe dispersal area because we cannot provide an accessible route to the public way. We wanted that accessible, we wanted those planters to be on an accessible route. And that made the most sense. So, if somebody that was, that had needs, they could still get to the, to the planter, to their...
Yeah, especially if they're raised, they can be accessible.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, we, things that we've thought about. Yeah, we've thought about it. All right.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
With that, I think we will now open the public comment at 6:22. So, members of the public are reminded, please come to the mic, state your name. If you're just representing yourself as an individual, you have three minutes to speak. Or if you're representing a group who are here, designated, you have 10 minutes.
Great. Good evening to you all, and I'm glad I'm hearing a lot of support. I'm here to speak on behalf of the East End Valley Street Neighborhood Association. We're all in support of this, and I want to thank you all for serving and for being open. I know nothing about all that technical stuff, but I do know that this is really important for the neighborhood. As you know, over the years, that neighborhood has been subjected to redlining and urban renewal and gentrification, and, and we feel like we're under assault almost all the time. And so, it's really important that we preserve these structures and also, the way this has unfolded, it looks like we're going to be able to, if, if we pass this, be able to provide some deeply affordable rental housing, hopefully to bring maybe some of the families that got displaced through urban renewal back into the neighborhood. So, if we have just a moment, I'd like to just kind of run through the, the process that got us to this point. Because it has really been a cooperative effort from the beginning. As soon as it came to light that developers had quietly purchased both these historic structures, the church and a nearby century-old house, and were planning to demolish them, Jesse Landell of the Preservation Society approached them and convinced them of the importance of preserving rather than destroying them. To their credit, the developers agreed to alter their plans, and the Preservation Society went out on a limb and bought these two structures back from the developers. Then, with great sensitivity, she reached out to the neighborhood to get our input on what ideas we had to repurpose the church. And when we had all agreed that the most feasible plan was to rework the interior in this plan to create several deeply affordable residential rental units, she reached out to the Asheville Bonham Community Land Trust and the Dogwood Health Trust and enlisted the willing services of architect Chip Howell and civil engineer Nick Bowman and a number of community volunteers, all of whom worked together to bring this amazing project to the point that it is now. Which is why, and this is my concluding words, which is why our Neighborhood Association is asking you to approve this zoning request. For we are really concerned that this historic church not become a million-dollar-plus single-family dwelling, which we no doubt hasten rather than slow down the pace of gentrification, raise our already high property taxes, and deprive both our neighborhood and the city of some much-needed affordable housing. I don't think I introduced myself. I'm Jim Abbott. I've lived in the neighborhood for 25 years. For 12 of those, I was the pastor of one of the historic churches in the neighborhood right next to Cappadocia St. Matthias of Episcopal Church. I'm active in the Neighborhood Association, and we are all in for preserving this neighborhood and appreciate your help in making that possible.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Any other members of the public wish to speak? If not, we will close public comment at 6:27. Any other deliberation from the...
I have a question for the planner reviewer, if they don't mind coming back up. It's really cool hearing the history of this development and hearing also that this is going to be affordable housing. My gut feeling was there's no way under the sun that this could be affordable because big retaining walls are expensive, stormwater retention's expensive, adaptive reuse can be very expensive. So, it's no great shock that this project has received a lot of outside funding to help the neighborhood in what is the best use for this building. What's interesting to me is the buffer requirements between residential uses. Does that, I've heard of something else we're working on, like middle housing. Could this be one of the impediments that we're looking at for all developments that actually impact affordability throughout the community?
You're asking my professional opinion on that?
Yeah, I'm asking, when you look at a project like this, does it seem correct and right in the UDO to have a 20-foot buffer requirement between two residential districts?
Yeah, I, I think that there is, particularly when you're talking about districts, that the underlying districts that have small lots, that a, a specific foot buffer can impede the affordability of housing. And, and I understand that it's difficult to write ordinances, you know, that, I mean, what we're talking about here is transition and opacity and things like that. 20 feet is 20 feet. And, and if you're, and when I should, it takes up almost a quarter of this lot. And so, yeah, I would, I would think that some flexibility or some give in that buffer would be a way to provide opportunities for housing that don't increase the cost or impede development. And that's my opinion. Vidilla has his own opinion.
Please introduce yourself.
Just, yes, Vidilla Saffica Planning, just to, Clay doesn't know that we're working on this as much. We're updating landscaping standards that we're going to be bringing to you guys later this year. And as part of that recommendation, we've been working with DSD and a lot of outside people, and we're proposing to do away with any buffer requirement between residential uses, at least at a certain level, say, like 12 units and less. There's still some discussion about the higher, higher up for smaller projects, definitely.
Great. Thanks for that preview.
On point of clarity, I know, I know the public comment, which was great, was set affordable housing, but at that point, we don't have a commitment from the developer here on any level of affordability.
I, I appreciate learning something that my department is doing today. Yes, I talked with the applicant about that, and, and for exactly the reasons that Commissioner Wheatley raised. It's, it's difficult for the owner to commit to certain levels of affordability at this stage with these unknown costs. And, and they do have that personal commitment, but, but placing it on the conditional zoning is something that might be unduly burdensome at this stage.
Sure. And I, I like a lot of things about this project. I just want to be careful calling something affordable before there is a hard commitment to
Yes.
That on paper. This is my personal view of that.
Right. We, we are not talking about it in, as affordable in the context of what we traditionally talk about in conditional zoning.
Sure, but I very good appreciate we're doing that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I just love so much about this project. Go team!
I did have a question. Clay, you mentioned that the East End Valley Plan, is that an adopted plan?
It's a...
Or is it, I'm just wondering, because the, the motion doesn't, it doesn't mention another adopted plan.
I, I don't think it's an adopted plan. I think it's a vision plan that resides on our one page or whatever. I don't think it's been adopted by the council.
Well, I'd, I'd just like to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners that this is a, a great project. Kudos to the project team, the Preservation Society, for your visionary leadership in, in retaining this property and crafting a vision for it. I, I think that many people think that as soon as zoning is approved, the project just jumps out of the ground, and we know you're going to have a long road ahead of you. So, best of luck if you receive our support and the support of council later. So, I'll entertain a motion.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 57 Mac Street from residential single-family high-density RS8 to residential multifamily-density conditional zone RM8 CZ. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, prioritizes greater densities of development overall as a means of achieving more walkable and efficient urban environments, and as a tool to help protect and preserve open space and the natural environment. Two, increases the supply of affordable housing in proximity to schools, transit, and parks. And three, by promoting adaptive reuse means, reuse as a means of conserving materials, history, and embodied energy in buildings.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have a zoning text amendment, item number nine on the agenda. As part of the middle housing initiative, a request to consider proposed zoning text amendments to Chapter Seven of the Unified Development Ordinance to revise flaglots, cottage developments, accessory dwelling units, and to establish a new small backyard lot standard and related adjustments. Planner coordinating review is Vidilla Saffica. And before we get started into the substance, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the modifications to what's described on the agenda versus what you're presenting?
Yes. How do I make this PDF?
Slide show option with the PDF. If you have your access slides. It's going to be mobile slides. I can, I can turn those up or cover those.
Okay. Yeah. Jackson to the rescue. Yeah. Just close it. I do need that one. I clicked on the wrong one. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. It's right here. No. Just open it.
Yeah, then where your slideshow, PDF slides, so.
It'll be a little slightly different, but it'll do the same. That's annoying.
That's how those, the mobile slides.
Yeah. Okay. I'll talk to you while, while that's happening. So, yes, thank you for clarifying. On the agenda, it's listed that this is reviewing flaglots and
Cottage.
Cottage development. Since you continued this to, this month, city council has requested that those two items be continued until September. And we thought with more time and with their thinking of not wanting to review it, that we would just bring to you fewer items. So, tonight, we are just going to be reviewing accessory dwelling units and the small backyard lot proposal and related changes. Okay. So, you've all seen a lot of this content, so we'll be able to go through it more quickly. And then to have questions, brief overview, we'll just talk about some context, the few definitions we're suggesting, what these backyard housing options are, and then we'll have some questions. So, for some background, to remind you again, this image is just to highlight that there is a relatively limited number of vacant parcels in, in residential properties in the city of Asheville, which is seen on the left. And on the right, you see the parcels that already have structures on them, residential structures in residential properties, on residential, in residentially-zoned land. And this isn't to say that all of these parcels have room for an accessory dwelling unit or a backyard cottage, but there's much more opportunity here. And we happen to bring these ordinances to you because of the citizen petition for flaglots that we thought it was apropos to link other backyard housing policies. And so, this is why we're here today. This is looking up more closely at an individual lot, and the way we're framing this conversation is that for vacant lot, vacant lots, there's a lot of opportunity for the middle housing that this study that we commissioned suggests, such as duplexes and triplexes that we're highlighting on the left here. It's very easy to build those on a vacant lot. On the existing parcels in Asheville, we have a single-family home or duplex like this on the right. And there's, there are, there are many of opportunities to build homes in the back. And we have some provisions for that, and we're suggesting to clean that up. So, first, I just wanted to show the three definitions that we are bringing to you. Two of them are amendments, and the top one is a new definition, which isn't that, even, even that important at this time because we're not reviewing flaglots. But here are the three definitions, and unless there are any questions, I'll just move through them because I think you've seen them, and they're somewhat in the weeds. All right?
I guess a question on Ribbon Drive is, I mean, that's not really applicable to what we're hearing tonight.
That's right. That's right. We're, we're suggesting this for at least some applications of flaglots. So, it's not that relevant. We would likely continue, we would likely try to include this definition in flaglots. So, we might as well review it and keep it here unless there's a problem with it.
With Ribbon Drive, is that also more broadly applicable to all residential applications?
It could be. It could be if we wanted to apply it to other applications. So, here, we're just suggesting that this is how we would define it, and actually didn't include this, but in, in the definition, we also have a visual that shows it as a drawing that's in your documents that I can't find. Oh, here it is.
I just mean that to say, is it a benefit to have it in there now for any other projects you may be reviewing? Is there a, a benefit to including it now is really my only question.
No, there's nothing pressing. So, since, since it happens to be here, we can review it unless you have a, a problem with it. But it might be good to have in the ordinance so that when we want to button up, impervious it might be good to have in the ordinance so that when we want to button up impervious surface standards and to have options like this, then we already have it in our definitions. Last time, we were talking about these three different typologies and how they're related to the idea of backyard housing policy. We are not going to talk about flaglots today, so we'll leave the code as it is. We had some direction from you that it's maybe not as pressing considering these backyard lots are potentially opening up a lot of similar properties that flaglots would open up, but without having to have that flagpole. So we're just looking at these two standards. I'll remind you that we currently allow for accessory dwelling units, so we're suggesting that we expand to allow detached structures for ADUs to move from 800 square foot to up to 1,000 square feet. And we're suggesting a similar standard for backyard lots. And backyard lots are really similar to ADUs, except that they would be on their own parcel. And some of the thinking that has guided us here has been that people want more flexibility, that sometimes they don't want an ADU on their own property. So it would be helpful if they could subdivide it, and that might open up more financing and make it easier on that front. So the three bolts here, we're just highlighting that we want to do a better job of expanding the opportunities for backyard housing, which we believe this does, both by expanding ADUs and creating a new standard for backyard lots. It's also implementing an anti-displacement strategy, which is recommended in the middle housing report to allow for lot splits. So we're getting more lots from our existing stock of housing. And we're suggesting compatibility for neighborhoods by having a consistent standard across these different typologies, so that the maximum structure size would be 1,000 square feet, maximum height of 24 feet, excuse me, in both, and setbacks at six feet. Not highlighted here, but we're also suggesting that for backyard lots, that those structures would only be allowed behind existing structures that have been in place for five years. And we've talked about that, and we believe that's important in order to have the market tend to choose middle housing when they can. But if there's an existing home there, having the flexibility to allow a small structure in the backyard. And a couple more slides. One slide is on the height discussion. There was, some of you brought up a question about how to measure height, whether we should use stories instead. We don't currently have the definition of stories, so I just wanted to talk about this briefly. I think it works, but the way we measure height is from the entrance of the emergency access to the ceiling of the highest floor. So here, on the right side of the image where you can see that stoop, you'd measure from those dotted lines, and that would be our maximum height of 24 feet. And in this case, where the property falls off in the back, you're still allowed to have a daylight basement. So it could be three stories, really. So there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to topography.
I've got to say, I appreciate that, you know, that you've taken that into consideration. And oftentimes, you know, you may look at a basement use, may not look at a basement use, and I don't generally see that as broadly adopted, that you would count a basement as part of the total height of the structure. So thank you for including our feedback in this.
Here, we're just showing a few examples of the better examples of small housing, but there's plenty of bad examples. I didn't want to show those. You've seen those.
I've seen them from the early 1900s before some of the people we hear speculated about in this life.
There you have it. And these are, you know, two- and three-bedroom, and one is even shown above a garage, so there's plenty of variety and different styles, modern, contemporary, and others. And so finally, here's a chart showing the differences between ADUs and what we're calling the small backyard lots. You can see that both of them will have a maximum size of 1,000 square feet. That's heated, so that still allows for garage, any garage space. Maximum height is the same. ADU doesn't have a minimum lot area because it's on the lot of the parent parcel. The other parcel, the small backyard lot, we're only suggesting 40 by 40, which is a very small lot. Setbacks would be the same. The home standard for being in front for five years would only be applicable to the small backyard lot because the ADU is sort of by definition on a lot with a home. We would not allow small backyard lots on a vacant lot for the reason I mentioned, that the intention is to encourage middle housing on those parcels. The land and the house could be sold separately for the small backyard lot, so somebody can choose to carve that off and to sell it for whatever they need it for. The sewer line cannot be shared with the small backyard lot. MSD does allow an ADU and the home, the parent home, to share a line, but under state law, that's not permitted. So that can be a challenge if those structures, if there's currently an ADU and somebody wants to carve it off, that could be a problem, but I suppose they would replumb that. And these are both, they would have similar driveways because we only allow one driveway per parcel. And then finally, these are both middle housing recommendations, and they really fall both within anti-displacement. So this is good for our housing situation. And I'll turn it over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safica. Appreciate the presentation and the collaboration. For those of the public who've been following this, we did have a collaborative work session with staff to discuss this and other aspects of the missing middle proposals, and we were able to hash out some issues that we had discussed at our last meeting. I do want to raise the question around neighborhood protection because that has become kind of a big part of the public discussion around missing middle housing. What is the current plan to, you know, solutions have been contemplated, say, an overlay district that hasn't been formally crafted or presented. When do we anticipate more kind of community engagement and discussion around the further protections for vulnerable communities that have expressed concerns about any missing middle?
I'll say that we are presenting to the Planning and Economic Development Subcommittee of Council on May 13th, which is the Monday after this coming Monday, and we're planning to focus a little bit more on that question because at the most recent council meeting, the reason they put off the flags and cottages was because, at least as it was stated, that they want to understand more about anti-displacement and how we're thinking about this. I'll highlight that we already have a lot of anti-displacement strategies that are in effect, both by the city and other agencies here. We are proposing some, like what you see here. I want to mention, you know, a concern when I hear this question of protecting neighborhoods with an overlay, which sort of assumes that it is hurtful to implement some of these regulations that actually are proposed to improve the housing situation by making it more resilient, either in the short term or the long term. But there is a concern, I think, for change, and so we have to be responsive to that. One thing that we're thinking is to focus more on an enabling area rather than an area that would be exempted. So potentially, looking at the place that the city rolls out and allows for middle housing, rather than saying everybody can do it except for a certain geographic area, which, yeah, could, might be a little more problematic, and from optics, it reads differently.
I appreciate the thought that's going into that. It'll be interesting to see where the community conversations lie. I do think that there's room for robust conversation around what solutions could dovetail with middle housing to mitigate impacts to legacy neighborhoods in particular. You know, one other thought is that there are many kinds of overlays we currently have in our UDO. Not all of them are restrictive on development, but procedural. You know, the downtown design review is an overlay which establishes a process for further consideration. So that could be something that we further consider as not making it an overlay that exempts or restricts, or even just a pilot overlay area, as you may have described, but an overlay that creates a more robust process for consideration in these sensitive communities. So I look forward to the further conversation because I do think it's an important aspect that we've been hearing about as a precursor or running in tandem to any broad zoning changes with middle housing. Any comments or questions from commissioners on kind of the technical aspects or any other aspects of?
Just real quick along the displacement concerns. It seems like the conversation around displacement within our presentations is really around a few isolated areas in our city. However, it seems like maybe the housing, the escalation of housing, the inflation of housing cost really isn't isolated to just one area. Are we concerned about displacement more broadly outside of just specific geographic locations?
I think, yes. I think we're concerned about the rising housing costs affecting all Ashvelians and the importance of creating more housing. We know that housing takes a long time to come online, and so it's important, I believe it's important to really try to make some of these changes, and I think council is interested in trying to move the needle because there are plenty of people in neighborhoods throughout the city that are facing housing pressures.
So just because a neighborhood, one or two or three or four neighborhoods, might feel like they're a little bit more prone to displacement, it might be by next week there could be six, eight, 10 neighborhoods, or likely what we're seeing now is that most of Asheville feels like it could be displaced relatively easy due to the fact that supply is very slow to respond while price can change on a moment-by-moment basis. It sounded to me a little bit like you're coordinating with, whether it be nonprofits or other institutions in Asheville, to better understand the displacement toolkit that's available for existing community members. Is that, did I hear that right?
Well, I think we'll be bringing to council a clearer picture of what the city is currently doing for anti-displacement, what programs we currently have on the books, what we are proposing, like, for example, this ordinance that is proposing to increase supply, as well as what other external organizations are doing and may propose to do in the future, partially coming from the Affordable Housing Plan. So now we have recommendations from Middle Housing Plan. We have some recommendations coming out of the Affordable Housing Plan, and then we can at least let council know what's coming down the pike, and then hopefully, we can start moving more of these ordinances forward.
Really cool.
I think that, yeah, the scale that we need to operate in in this community is vast. You know, it's no secret that we have a housing supply issue, so I really appreciate the creativity you're bringing to, you know, trying to create one solution for that. I do have a couple of questions. You mentioned MSD, and I really appreciate that there's been some thoughtfulness on MSD requirements when we're talking about non-traditional house typologies. Have there been conversations with them about the small backyard lot in particular? I think we're proposing a 10-foot utility and access easement. Their easements are much larger, so I'm just curious, like, is there a maximum distance that they have from the tap at the main line, or have you had any conversations with MSD?
I have had conversations with them about this specifically, and the only issue that really came up was that the line has to be a separate line when it's on its own parcel. The easement wasn't an issue. I can double-check, but that didn't come up.
Okay. I seem to remember their minimum easement is 20 feet, but if you're, you know, if you have the cleanout by the street, then they don't really care beyond that. You know, that's the private sewer line, so it seems like 10 feet's enough. I just was curious if there'd been conversations around compatibility with theirs. The other questions I have, you know, I still have some concerns around the five-year requirement. That strikes me as, you know, kind of unprecedented and a very new feature of any aspect of our UDO. I know I've shared those with you, those concerns with you before, so any sort of last thoughts on why this is, why the five-year requirement on the parent parcel is so important to enable a subdivision of the backyard?
Well, I don't have some of the images to help explain why we think it's important, but I'll just summarize to say that it seems like a healthy balance to allow the many existing homeowners that want to take advantage of this, which is the majority. And there are a few exceptions where we have vacant lots, where somebody might think, oh, can I do that on my vacant lot? Where we instead want the thinking not, can I build two single-family homes? Because this middle housing study is telling us middle housing, or, excuse me, single-family housing is the most expensive type of housing, that we would discourage them from building the two single-family structures to instead build a duplex or a triplex or a quadplex, which is coming down the pike. So if we can preempt them from doing that, we move the market in the proper direction. And this seems like a relatively easy way to do that, and to allow all the owner, property owners that are existing, the majority of them, to benefit from it.
I appreciate that explanation. I understand the desire. I wonder if it will have that effect, and I do think that, you know, we are not yet legalizing duplexes in townhomes in all residential districts. So it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse if we are, you know, codifying something that will rely on a future legalization of duplexes in all residential districts since...
Well, I would say the majority of the existing lots that we're talking about are already built, so the majority will benefit. It's the minority, the very, very small minority of vacant lots that will have to wait until we have duplexes or triplexes, and that want to take advantage of this. A lot of them may not want to, because if you're building new, do you want to build a 1,000-square-foot structure in the back? You might not want to. You know, people I've spoken with, they're looking forward to the middle housing, want to build the fourplex.
I would, I think the alternative thought that has been floated is that this would only apply in minor subdivisions, and I would certainly endorse that proposal. I think that's very reasonable as a way to get the impact from small backyard lots, but I don't, I don't think I'm quite there on accepting a five-year requirement on the parent parcel structure, but I certainly appreciate the thought and explanation that went into it.
We, just to mention something about that, I forgot to bring that up. We could consider that, the downside on that is we're also not adjusting our procedural standards for a while, so there is a lag in that. And more projects, there are some projects that would still be able to slip through for two lots that are subdivided, that wouldn't fit this future trigger. Now we're getting in the weeds, and most people are not, don't know what we're talking about. Would be able to have the two single-family lots with the two backyard structures for new construction, and that arguably could be a worse outcome.
I'd just like to reiterate that you said something really interesting in there about moving the market or directing the market. I think, and I don't think it's outlandish to say, but we've proven that we don't control... I think, and I don't think it's outlandish to say, but we've proven that we don't control the market almost in any way. And that to think that a nudge on backyard lots and then a nuanced detail with this five-year requirement is going to really significantly alter the landscape of the housing market in Asheville, I think is a gross misconception of what we're doing here. And so it kind of leads to that second question of, you know, you're making the claim that this five-year requirement is really important and I'm interested to know what the key performance indicators are that you're planning to track to actually see the outcomes of the claims you're making because I have a hard time believing that this is going to shift the market in any really significant way. And I would follow Chair Barton there that we should be looking to activate as much supply as possible first and monitoring how that's working and how that's improving our community or impacting our community. So what are the indicators you're intending to track?
Well, we would definitely track new units regardless of the type of structure. So, you know, if, depending on how this went, if, if we had the five-year clause in effect, we could look at vacant lots and see what's being built. And if we didn't have the clause, we would follow it and we would see whether or not people are, you know, building two single-family structures because there is a strong market for single-family versus multifamily. And if we do, that would be an indicator that, that maybe it would have been a good idea to have an incentive to not allow more single-family.
I guess that wasn't a very specific indicator. How do you intend to track backyard lots specifically?
We have a new system that we're rolling out and we're going to track all of development. So we're tracking it now, but we're going to have better tools to track it. So we'll track the number of single-family units, the number of duplexes, triplexes, and, and that will be developed as the system comes online. Do you want to say something?
If I could offer. So again, the council consideration of any of these middle housing initiatives is not going to occur until September, so what we're presenting to you tonight is a presentation to the zoning commission, hopefully to get your approval on this component of missing middle housing. When the whole package moves forward, it will include a suite of metrics that will be tracked moving forward. We're still developing that list right now for the larger amendment, but if I had to pick out the ones that would apply to these backyard lots, clearly we would track things like new lots created under this provision, average square footage of homes permitted on these new lots created by this provision, and the geographic location of those lots. That's in no means a complete list I'm giving you right now, but there's, there's what I would pick out right now from that master list.
Yeah, I really appreciate it because I think that's where we hear some of this conversation from the community and the worry about change and unsubstantiated claims, you know, that it is going to be an improvement to their lifestyle, that more housing supply is going to be generated, that these are in fact good ideas. Yeah, I think it's important to start creating the track record of understanding the outcomes that we're aiming for. So just to reiterate, I don't, also don't support the five-year requirement of an existing structure. I feel it's unnecessary at this point in time to additionally burden supply of housing. I don't agree that there's any bad, you know, small home. There is no bad small home. There are people who don't have shelter in our community and we need to solve that first before we worry about architectural details.
Any other thoughts from the commissioners?
No, just to echo your questions, Commissioner Barton, and look forward to public engagement on this. I'm excited to move it forward and hopefully champion some of the good pieces of this when it comes to council.
I'd just like to thank Vindela, I don't know how much work you put in on this and I've been involved in this at different points throughout the way, so I just appreciate all the hard work and I think, you know, this is obviously just one, one part of a bigger picture, but we got to start knocking some of these things off the list. Thank you.
I've got a couple more, just like really in the weeds, technical details. I would save until everyone was asleep. Did Ms. Ashley?
I just wanted to ask the question on the five-year rule. Have you looked at it as a displacement strategy? Sometimes when you're in a hot market, small homes get demolished and so if there is an infill development and so if there's, oh, we can do this, more development on what may not be a vacant lot now, but could be if you demolish it. I don't know if that's where, I think you had a, you had a specific example of where the five-year requirement came from, keeping existing homes. And you've also looked at the housing stock and most houses in, particularly in these neighborhoods that have the open backyard lots are much more than five years old. They're, they're really old. So I, I just didn't know if there was any concern or, you know, or any reason that might say if we don't have this five-year rule, there could be an incentive to demolish and build on both, on the full lot.
Good point. It definitely would be an anti-displacement strategy that at a minimum we would want to have maybe to disallow demolition in order to achieve the, the small backyard lot because that likely would mean somebody would be physically displaced. I guess I've been thinking mostly about just the vacant lots and more opportunity, but in cases of displacement, we, we wouldn't want that to happen in order to take advantage of new.
So do you have an example of somewhere that has really affordable housing, great housing supply, and they've implemented this five-year requirement?
No, this, this is, we, we've developed this...
So we're originators, we're smarter than every other housing market.
We are trying to think outside of the box and come up with new solutions, yes.
Well, I thought you had a, I thought you had a sample.
Well, the, the five-year came from, from Portland, Oregon, where they were recommending a similar, similar strategy, but a different strategy.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Wheatley's point from earlier, I understand and appreciate the desire to sort of get what we want out of these ordinances, but I think there's a plausible argument to be made that by restricting to lots that have an existing home on them, we are now targeting those for investment opportunities where there is a subdivisible backyard lot. And so we're kind of almost directing some builders to then look at what's out there in the communities that have the lowest-cost housing stock so that they can monetize the backyard. So, you know, we just don't know, I think is the, the real answer. We don't know what will cause displacement and what will hedge against displacement. What we do know is we need greater flexibility on our UDO and I think the core of this seeks to achieve that. So, you know, I think we're there on 90% of it. It's just, you know, the five-year thing and what it could or could not do with market response, I'm just not completely convinced by. But the, the couple just technical things that I wanted to mention is in the corner lot, can you just talk through, like, there, there was a corner lot setback provision within the backyard lot section and I'm kind of curious how a backyard lot exists on a corner lot because you would have road frontage then, wouldn't you?
Yeah, let me take a look at this and see if I can make sense of it. So it's setbacks, the front side and setbacks shall be six feet except for corner lots. Corner lot setbacks shall meet those of the zoning districts. So if, if, if it's on the backyard but also on a side street, then it's on a corner lot and we have corner lot setbacks that are somewhat different than the side setbacks. Instead of six feet, it's like seven and a half feet.
Okay. I guess it confused, once you subdivide it, it no longer becomes a corner lot, but you would still apply the setback requirement before you subdivide it?
That's a good, that's a good point. We need to think through that because you're right, once you subdivide it, we, we even, it would be easier to address it to the, the other street. And in that case, the, the side setback is now the front setback. That begs the question, do we want to have a 40 by 40 lot on a street?
With road frontage?
Right.
And I think the addressing is a really good point. You may want to chat with the E911 coordinator on, you know, that, that lot probably should be addressed to its road frontage and it would be confusing if it's addressed to the other.
Yes.
But again, details that, you know, can be ironed out. The last one that I'll mention is the 1,000-square-foot requirement. I think I understand that on ADUs, there is a recommendation in the missing middle housing report. The, the report actually contemplates a slightly higher square footage allowance for these small backyard lots, I think in recognition that they are, you know, they will be sellable lots on their own, standalone lots. And so it contemplates 1,200 square feet and to me, I think those, that extra 1,200 feet is not huge on neighborhood impact, but does hugely impact, you know, the type of three-bedroom housing that can be accommodated within it. So any thought on those thresholds? I know you're trying to go for consistency, but why break from the recommendation on the missing middle housing report?
Well, a lot of the recommendations are guide and, and, you know, we have to weigh our local concerns and different issues. So what we thought would be a good balance would be to expand ADUs by 20% from where they are today to 1,000 square feet and that that would be a very simple way to be consistent across the board. You know, in his new book, Chuck Marone's new book about affordable housing, they're suggesting that, you know, we need to build a lot more housing on a much smaller scale, like under 1,000, 1,000 square feet. We've done analysis in Asheville and 15% of residential structures in residential districts are 1,000 square feet or less. So that's a huge component of our existing building stock that is, you know, within the same, the same range. So, you know, I think we can, we can bounce around it, but it seems like a reasonable number that would, would help to be consistent and to make neighborhoods feel comfortable and safe that, that it's not going to be opening up the flood, the floodgate to something that may be a little bit too big.
So there is a technical word for this, shrinkflation. Shrink, shrinkflation is actually a technical economic word. You can look it up. I think setting a false ceiling at 1,000 square feet actually encourages that, that shrinkflation because you're saying that you're, you're actually adding a very high value to any building over 1,000 square feet. You see what I mean? There's actually a price jump you're going to have because of that 1,000 square feet. Very difficult to squeeze three-bedroom in 1,000 square feet. A little bit easier to squeeze three-bedroom into 1,200 square feet. And I would say, I do think that 1,000 square feet is a, is a false ceiling that may create unexpected outcomes for those houses that are now 1,400 square feet. You know, if your housing stock doesn't have, like we heard about with trees, enough variety in its sizing, you, you may get some unintended consequences there. And I think being really conservative out of the gates, you know, we're trying to relieve pressure from many different types of supply and 1,200 does feel more flexible. I actually appreciate the increased square footage on the ADUs as well, from 800 to 1,000 square feet. And I would like to see us have more flexibility when we're setting a hard ceiling on how big a building can be. It's kind of similar to the lot size of 40 by 40. It seems a little arbitrary to have a dimensional hard line. Is there a reason we would have 40 by 40 versus 1,600, especially in a community that does have many topographical constraints that might cut off that 40 by 40 option?
You have a couple of questions in there. First, I'll just highlight that you mentioned it'll be tough to fit in a three-bedroom in there. Well, the greatest need in Buncombe in Asheville is one and two bedrooms moving forward. So first of all, it's important to note that we can't be all things to all situations. So we're not, we're not suggesting, although I did show some images showing that you can fit a three-bedroom in there, the intention is that this is smaller living and we know that one and two bedrooms are the greatest need. So yeah, we can go up, but I think we're generally concerned from the neighborhood side that this is going to open up, like you said, potentially 30 lots for, for more housing. And, and we think this is already an expansion that maybe we should test first. And the second question was about the 40 by 40. That was somewhat arbitrary. The idea was we want to, we want to sort of match what is allowed with ADUs and that seemed to kind of, kind of be reasonable, but it could vary, it could go to, you know, 50 by 50, it could go to square feet. There's lots of different ways to approach it.
I mean, 1,600 is, is cool. 40 by 40 is a good-sized lot, so 1,600, I would be welcoming of smaller square footage lots personally, just because I have seen many misshapen lots in Asheville, but just, just a thought.
I think it's a, yeah, it's a good thought about just kind of the odd geometry that you see with, that providing some flexibility would be a good idea. Wonder if there is like a 1,600 square feet with a minimum, you know, you don't want like a, you know, 10 by 100 square foot lot or, you know, but a minimum dimension.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like Jason here, like, why not? I mean, I don't, I just know that we have people living on the street. That's not super cool, in my opinion, and I'd like to see housing options.
More flexibility is good, we're fine with that, so.
Yeah, I think, I agree. I think 1,600 square feet, I mean, that's the 40 by 40 is 1,600. It, it just allows for more geometry in, in the mountains.
Okay. Well, if there's no other pressing comments, maybe we shall open it for public comment. So we will open public comment at 7:17. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Please approach the mics, state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Scott Adams. I'm a land development planner with Compact Cottages for a local home builder here in town. I'm also a member of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Can you all hear me if I'm still not quite leaning over? Quite tall. And I've also been part of the small implementation team following from the missing middle housing study and was on the larger implementer, the advisory working group, keep changing terms of art. Just wanted to offer two quick comments on the substance that we're very appreciatively discussing today. On the, the first item, basically, I guess the question of restriction on both either a vacant lot or requiring a home for five years. That's something that I and another member of our small implementation team, Kat McReynold, she's a local home builder, I think with Green Room Builders, tends to do detached and duplex twins together. We both spoke to that in opposition to that for some of the concerns that have been voiced up here. And I'll just add that I think that overall, at least compared to the sort of, I'll call them garden variety dimensional standards of setback slot size, whatnot, that particular provision on the five-year and, or those two rather, on the five-year and the vacant lot, they really just seem additive and complicating rather than reductive and simplifying, which at least in my mind, when I typically look at code and work with code as a planner, as, you know, just somebody in land development, trying to look at the end product, that's something that I'm looking at. So I think it's also, it raises the question of, you know, will this guide the market or not? It really, in my mind, at least in seeing, again, all kinds of, you know, different lot configurations, small, weird, irregular, small infill sites, different strokes for different folks, trying to look at creating, you know, a bit of ordinance that is responsive to market forces and also individual property rights. different folks, trying to look at creating, you know, a bit of ordinance that is responsive to market forces and also individual property rights. Now, those are two big sweeping phrases that I just voiced. So I'll give you two quick, more specific examples on those. In terms of the flexibility of permitted uses, if you want to do it, you know, to detached units versus an attached unit, the site may dictate that. Asheville is perforated and laced with sewer easements and backyards, side yards, you know, half the time we don't even know where our pipes are. If you're looking for a sinkhole, there may be one near you. In terms of, yeah, again, the flexibility of permitted uses and also just the timing and the phasing of property developments, if you don't have, you know, either the time or money to quite make a leap toward a larger building, if you're able to stepwise it with either a backyard lot and doing something upfront later or what have you, it's really just trying to look at it from that flexibility standpoint, both for an individual property owner or set of property owners, whether it's a family or...
It's a nice reference.
Sorry about that. So yeah, really just trying to look at flexibility, both in permitted uses and timing and phasing and development and really just kind of putting a question to, what is the rational nexus of that? What are the actual benefits for public health, safety and welfare of those two provisions? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Robert Robinson. I just wanted to say, with reference to the five-year requirement, I'm for more housing options in our community. So I would support removing that requirement if it's on the table to do that. And then the other thing is with the minimum 40-foot by 40-foot lot sizes, if someone has a lot that's, you know, 35 by 50 feet, I would hate for them not to be able to create their, their, you know, their additional housing option in our community because of an arbitrary requirement like that. So having a minimum square footage that's, you know, 1,600 or expressed in square feet as opposed to the edge perimeters would be something that I would also support. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, y'all. It's Barry Bialik from Compact Cottages. I'm the former chair of the Affordable Housing Committee for the city. Does this work? Can I use this? The overhead?
Yeah.
Let's see. It may take more than three minutes to boot up.
I know, I want to be really fast for the techno stuff.
It's on.
It's on? Okay. Okay, cool. All right. So I'm going to show you two things. This is a tale, this is a tale of two cities. So I'm going to talk quick about Durham, North Carolina, who changed their rules to allow more flexibility for building small lots and smaller houses back in 2019 and revised it again last year. This is Durham. I looked at, I pulled this earlier today. This is a new construction house. I pulled the list from the MLS, less than $350,000 for houses less than two years old. There's 26 homes. This one's $300,000 in Durham. Durham changed their rules to allow more small backyard lots, back, and small lot standards, which are 2,000 square foot lots, limited to 1,200 square feet. And it's been an amazing tool. Durham does not have the same problems we do. So they, they, they adopted their missing middle 2019. They looked at what worked and what didn't from the whole missing middle package. What worked the most was small lot splits, was flag lots, was backyard small lots. And that's kind of like what, why I proposed what I did with the flag lots, backyards, based it off of Durham and the flexibility. So this is what can happen with a city that is progressive and kind of looks ahead for how to make the changes. So three, so less than $350,000, 26 homes for sale that are less than two years old in Durham. That's amazing. I'm going to look quick at Asheville. Asheville, and I've been tracking this for the AHAC for years, but we have one house under contract for less than $350,000 that's less than two years old. It's $325,000. It's on a lot I looked at. And again, to attest to the weirdness of our lots, this is in the city, but in this little thing here, it didn't have access to city water. So in the middle of the city in Oakley, they had to drill a well because of our weird infrastructure. So this is just an example of what we need is rules to open up more housing, but we need to be really careful when we do these rules to have the flexibility that each lot is different. We need backyard lots, we need flag lots, we need two-lot cottages, we need every tool because every lot is really weird here. So that's the two things. The other thing I was going to share is Raleigh did the same thing. Raleigh, let's see, in 2021, adopted their middle housing bill. They looked after a year how it worked. In 2022, they readopted it. They expanded the size of the houses. They had a limit of 1,000 square feet. They raised it to 1,200 square feet because you can't really build a three, a three-bedroom house in, in, in 1,000 square feet. So they actually upped their standards. I think they have like a floor area ratio of like 800 square feet, but they went up to 1,200 square feet. So I strongly encourage like, and we know these things, like this, whatever this package is tonight, it's not going to be in council until September. I would strongly encourage the same way you did with mine, to send it to the TRC committee because then they can really look at backyard lots for, for sewer and for water because sewer was not really included in missing middle discussions. And everything, everything, everything we build in the city is driven by infrastructure and we forget that. It's not driven by zoning. It's driven by infrastructure. If you don't have sewer and you don't have water, you can't build really. So we really need to look at that. So I would really suggest sending all of this to TRC and have them look at it. But if it does move forward, I would say definitely drop the five-year minimum because that's going to be a displacement tool, not a, not a anti-displacement. Developers and builders are going to try to build every, try to buy every inexpensive house and knock it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment at 7:26. Further comments, questions, deliberation?
I have additional comments. All right, Vidella, back up. We're in the weeds again. I was reviewing the, the, the actual text amendment itself and it looks as though I just have a couple of questions. In the ADUs, you have included three units as the threshold for structure allowing for ADUs? And I was wondering if there's any specific reason why you wouldn't include up to a quadplex as kind of coming into alignment with the upcoming residential, North Carolina State Residential Building Code?
So initially, we did, let me just read you the, what we have here so that everybody can know what we're talking about. What it says is that, I'm sorry, that's the part of our definitions, right?
This is within the text. It is paragraph three, sub-paragraph A, sub-sub-paragraph one, under the ADU. It says, any, or an accessory dwelling unit shall be located only on a residential lot containing a residential structure of three or fewer units.
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, so initially it was higher than that and we were recommended to lower that in order to have the, the ADU and the three units fall under four units or less for residential building code because an accessory dwelling unit is considered a residential unit. And then if we have and three, and three units or fewer, that holds four units on a lot.
Understood. So it'd be, and this is like in the case of an attached ADU, then it would become a four unit, essentially a four unit by building code standard.
Well, maybe that, but I'm sorry, I'm also remembering that this is in order to be part of not to be outside of the level one trigger. Remember, we're going to change the level one triggers to five units and more.
Cool.
So we wanted this to be easier to process. Now, if we don't care about that, we can change that, but we wanted it to be streamlined.
You said easier to process. I got giddy. That was great. Thank you. A long kind of following down in the text there, the structures maintained the maximum gross floor area of a necessary dwelling unit not exceeding 1,000 square feet. And we had discussed in the working meeting that that would be heated, heated square footage instead of gross floor area?
No, what we talked about was allowing for garages to not be included in the 1,000 square feet. And as long as we stick with gross floor area, they are not included. So this means you can have your 1,000 square feet and your garage.
And I just, I, I guess I don't follow because I read the gross floor area definition in our UDO and it appears that a garage would be included in the gross floor area? Is that a misinterpretation?
I don't have that here, but I don't, I think, I think it's a misinterpretation. Gross floor area, correct me, anybody? Gross floor area does not include garage space.
Okay.
Yeah, it does not. We, we were talking about adjust, making some adjustments, but we dropped that as a definition.
Yeah.
We did add, let me just clarify, number two here, the maximum building footprint shall not exceed 1,000 square feet so that somebody doesn't build a garage that's 2,000 square feet. And then, and then the ADU above that.
That's cool.
Which probably wouldn't happen, but you know.
Probably, yeah. Respect that. Well, once we check on that gross floor area, that'd be appreciated, just to make sure we get that addressed. And then, let me see, I did have a question about the, this is back on small backyard lots. Currently, similar question about three residential units or less being able to have a small backyard lot? I'm wondering if that could be moved to four units to reflect the new North Carolina Residential Building Code because it would be a separate lot separately deeded. Then that would remain separate from the level one as well as allow for a quadplex to then have a lot split off?
Oh, you're just suggesting that the parent parcel shall, shall be allowed to have a residential structure generally?
Exactly. Literally behind any residential structure.
Yeah, I think, I think we're fine with that. As long as, as long as the parent parcel is a residential structure, I don't imagine we would have an issue with that.
Excellent. I told you I was going to be in the weeds. I, I don't mean to be that way. It's just the devil's in the details.
So Commissioner Beadley, just to verify, our definition of gross floor area does exclude structures for parking.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. With regards to the small backyard lots as well, right now, the way it's written is to allow only one parent parcel. And so I'm wondering if, like, kind of what the logic is behind that, if we're looking for additional supply? I'm just interested.
It's a good question. I think the, the idea was to keep it limited and again, to maintain how much resistance or concern we get from neighborhood groups. But you raise a question, if somebody has, you know, 5,000, 10,000 square feet in the back, is it leaving chips on the table to only say you can do that once? I mean, I think it's something for discussion. We landed on, let's start while opening the gates maybe constrained?
Yeah, I just, if we're open to the square footage and not restricting it, I think that could be a really interesting option. Just having seen some of these misshapen lots, you know, or 100 lineal foot at the curb of a lot, 100, 100 lineal foot width, you know, of a lot, that would be, I just think if we have somebody who goes ahead and executes the option of a small backyard lot, they will execute that once and probably not twice. So if it's constrained, we may end up with larger small backyard lots than we would expect and then having a constraint of 1,200 square feet max.
Yeah, another barrier now, now thinking about this would be fire. As I understand the city's current interpretation is that if there are more than two access ways to a property, that it needs to have a fire access road 20-foot paved. So that, for example, if you have a gravel driveway, you can have a gravel driveway to your house, you can have a gravel driveway to someone else's house off that driveway. But once you have a third, third residence, you have to meet their, their fire access road.
I thought we were constrained by the 150-foot maximum from the road.
That's, that's an addition, that's an addition to it. Regardless, you're, you're constrained by that, whether or not you meet the three, the three units.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that, and just being a bozo and not knowing for sure, say I'm on Cumberland Avenue, right, and I've got a 100-foot long lot and a house in the center of the front, and then I have two houses behind. How is either of those houses different from the other because neither actually has drive access?
They're, they're not really different. You know, you're making a good argument. Geographically, they're, they're similar. They're right next to each other. But the, the current interpretation, and we can get that for you at a future meeting, is that with more than two units, the access is required to be upgraded to fire standards.
Yeah, I just, the road itself, right, is serving every house on the street. And having two additional separate lots, I don't understand what's being served there. Like, neither one of those lots are being served by a road and neither one of those are on the same parcel. So I'm missing.
Adding to this, this is our, this is the interpretation we've been given by the fire marshal. So we can't, I mean, can't really answer the question of why, but we're told that's what's in the code. So we're just advising you all that that is what we're told is in the fire code and could be a, could be a barrier, right?
Yeah, I'd like to examine that further because it doesn't seem to hold water in, in my simple perspective.
I think it's not just fire code, but I know from my professional experience, the MSD as well, once you get over three units and stuff, there's allocation letters. And I mean, there's other barriers to having multiple structures for one owner in a lot and stuff. And so I think that that kind of triggers once we get above the two or three structure.
These are separate lots, right?
So let me, let me, let me state it this way. There, there's one access to what we're talking about, this development is on one, currently on one parcel, right? So there's only one driveway. We would only permit one driveway because we only allow one driveway per parcel, right? So you drive up this parcel and it's typically paved and narrow. But the fire interpretation is now if you're carving it off, we're suggesting to a second lot, fire would have no issue with that. You, you raised the question, what about subdividing it into two, into allowing more subdivision? That would then create a third lot that would trigger this fire access standard where they, based on their information and requirements, would need this driveway to be upgraded before that third home is allowed.
I mean, I think that this conceptual driveway, we're all mentally, I bet if you ask every person in this room, this driveway looks different, you know?
We shouldn't, yeah, spend more time to actually draw this out.
Yeah, but what, I guess what I'm saying is that it's hard for me to imagine there's a world where this fire truck is driving directly into another house to service some house that's off behind. You see what I mean? I'm just, so what I would, if, just to not belabor everyone here with an interpretation that we can't resolve, I would feel comfortable supporting only one backyard lot if that's all we could do. But I would, if we could have it be part of the conditions for you to examine that and talk with the fire marshal about, in particularly, these small backyard lots, it would be appreciated because I do think there would be missed opportunity for supply constraining it to one.
Okay. I can do that.
Couldn't be right to allow more than one, but just say if it is, if it's...
Contingent.
Then it's, then the standards will have to apply. And it's probably, I mean, those aren't the standards. And 20 feet is pretty wide, but who knows? Maybe somebody can make a 20-foot wide driveway. I don't know.
I think, I think we might be better served by gathering the information first because I don't want to enable something in the code that leads people to believe they can do something that is not practical.
Yeah, I, I am super comfortable empowering you guys to look at it after this as an option.
That's a good question, yeah. Any other final thoughts on this? If not, we, I feel like we've talked about a few modifications. So briefly, I'll summarize and please, Vidella, if I miss anything, or anyone else, correct me. Sounds like we've talked about... Sounds like we've talked about changing the 40-foot by 40-foot to a 1,600-square-foot lot area.
Perhaps with a minimum dimension as well.
Perhaps, yeah. We've talked about making the small backyard lot applicable behind any residential structure rather than defining it as one or two. We have talked about tracking and implementation to understand the effectiveness and the number of units created with this provision. And then we spent a lot of time talking through the five-year provision versus the alternative of just making it allowed in minor subdivisions. And then lastly, we talked about, I don't know that we have shared agreement on, so open to feedback on increasing the square footage to 1,200 square feet. Anything else others remember?
You also mentioned to just verify MSD sewer easement. We can do that. We need to button up the corner lot language.
Right.
That's all I have.
So with those comments summarized, I'd entertain a motion.
I just have one quick question. I know it's so bad, but I want to just clarify real quick. The table of use only addresses ADUs. And so when looking at backyard lots, is it correct to understand that these are going to be accessible in all residential districts?
These would read as single-family homes. So they would, that's how they would read in the table because they're on their own lot.
It's not a separate use. The lot is just a separate.
So anywhere a single-family home is.
Excellent. Okay, I just, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was super clear on that.
And I guess the last comment I'll sort of hearken back to is probably the most important, is the ongoing conversation around legacy neighborhoods and anti-displacement and how this fits into a more holistic community engagement strategy.
Definitely.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Chair. I move to recommend approval of the proposed warding amendments to Chapter 7 with Commissioner Barton's aforementioned list. Bet it of the Asheville Code of Ordinance and find that the proposed amendments are reasonable, are in the public interest, are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and meet the development needs of the community in that the amendments, one, are based upon recommendations of the missing middle housing study. Two, will provide more housing opportunities that are contextually sensitive to neighborhoods. And three, will implement one of the recommended long-term anti-displacement strategies by allowing lots subdivisions that will increase housing supply incrementally for existing homeowners.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Good luck with the next steps. We'll look forward to hearing more about this missing middle conversation. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Thanks for everyone's patience and endurance. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
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 All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.